Good morning. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. It is 10:00 a.m. on May 3rd. Please stand with me if you are able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Second.
Seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Yes, aye, Basil, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you would like to make public comment, feel free to step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. From the phone, I believe it's star nine. And if you could, yes, right here, please, if you could state your name.
I will. I'm John Pop, Mayor Gilbert, and I just wanted to comment on the fringe plan. I think that's on today's agenda. Just wanted to reiterate some of the discussions we had last night at our council meeting about trying to maintain the corridor from 190th to 180th as an agricultural area and not a development area. I know that there's some work being done by some of the county staff. I know Amelia is working on maps and definitions. And I just wanted to reiterate that from the city standpoint, Gilbert, that we'd like to see that continued as it is in the current plan and as has been documents we've presented up to this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming. Anyone else would like to make public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment number one. And we will move to recognition of the 2022 Citizens of the Year, Edna Young Clinton and Wayne. We're going to move down here, if that's all right, if you want to explain that part. We've got several people zooming in, so I on the screen too. The Story County Citizen of the Year Award is given annually to residents of Story County who perform meritorious service above and beyond what would be expected of a citizen. Their efforts demonstrate creativity, vision, leadership, and citizenship by providing service to programs and activities that positively impact the welfare of the citizens of Story County. This extraordinary service is either through their regular vocation or the community outside their vocation, or a combination of both. And before we get started, as we were working on this, I just, I reached out to a few people and asked for some memories or some quotes that we can include in this presentation. One person shared that Edna cares deeply about others. It's difficult to think of any local initiative addressing injustice that doesn't involve Ms. Edna. Another person said, what I'd like to share about Edna and Wayne is their expressed compassion and advocacy for individuals with disabilities. Their openness with sharing experiences about family members who live with physical, mental, and intellectual disabilities was inspirational and meaningful to other families who needed support. This helps strengthen and enhance the services available in our community for individuals with disabilities to live, work, and recreate as independently as possible. Another person shared a quote from Maya Angelou. I've learned that whatever I decide something with open ears, I usually make the right decision. I've learned that even when I have pains, I don't have to be the one. I've learned that every day you should reach out and touch someone. People love a warm hug or just a friendly pat on the back. I've learned that I still have a lot to learn. I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. But people will never forget how you made them feel. This person said, to me, this embodies everything that Wayne stands for. He treats everyone with loving kindness and makes everyone feel seen. People remember how happy he made them feel. That includes me. Ah, Lady B. Clinton served as a Story County Supervisor for 16 years, leading the county's chair several times during his tenure. In 2017, he was recognized with the Golden Eagle Award from the Iowa County Association of Counties for his extraordinary public service to county government through his involvement in both state and national organizations. Prior to serving on the Board of Supervisors, he taught and coached in the Ames Community School District for more than 30 years. His mentoring impacted countless young lives, growing future community leaders. He has served on the boards of Boys and Girls Club, YSS Policy and Prevention, NAMM Central Iowa, the State of Iowa Juvenile Justice Advisory Council, the State National Health Risk School Board, and countless others to numerous to list. He is active in the NAACP and currently serves on the Ames Human Rights Commission and the Ames History Museum Board of Directors. And in 2017, he was also inducted into the Iowa African American Hall of Fame for his endless contributions. Brad, just like, he's right.
Well, it does, it's still bigger. So I have a few words to say, Edna. Edna Young Clinton, as a resident of Ames for more than 50 years, has been a champion for civil rights, education, criminal justice reform, and ensuring access to medical and mental health information. She was instrumental in the formation of the Ames Branch, the NAACP, and has served as president from 1994 to 1995, again from 2012 to 2022. I've got more. She also served on the Ames Human Relations Commission for six years. And she's a longtime member of the Legal Women Voters and served on its board for several years. We served together and that was a pleasure. She worked closely with Ames Community School District, Ames Police, and the Story County Sheriff's Office to go community relations and train law enforcement officers, unimplicit bias. She was again instrumental in forming the Ames Few, gathering Black women who still provide friendship and safety. She's been active with the Center for Creative Justice and also helped develop the Ames, City of Ames Citizens Advisory. Let me take a breath, I got a little more. There's always more. And because we're leadership of the NAACP, we're now included as part of the Ames Police Department's recruited, the NAACP is now included as part of Ames Police Department's recruitment and selection committees. She has been a driving force for countless community conversations, including Chalk Race, Taking the Lead Series, Black Health Matters, the Legislative Wakeups with the Week, and so much more. Thank you, Edna Young.
First of all, I'm truly honored, probably more so because I get to share this. You know, many of you know my story. And 56 years ago, if it wasn't for Edna willing to come to Iowa, out of St. Louis, right after I graduated from college, she was already employed while, and we had two children, to come here and start a new life, a new career, none of this would have happened. And over the years, all the things that I was able to do would be a part of, could not have happened had it not been for her guidance, self-assurance, and holding down the fort with the children while I was out, engaged in some other things. So it's truly an honor to be able to share this. But for all of you in the audience, former colleagues, people that I know, folks that I've served with on other boards and other commissions, it's truly an honor that you chose to come today to honor the two of us. Never did I imagine that what we were doing in the community would rash the level of recognition such as this. We do it because we believe that what is right and what we stand for, we want to make sure that other people have equal opportunities for the betterment of their lives. And from teaching to coaching to serving as a county supervisor, this has afforded both of us tremendous opportunity. So again, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and all the citizens in this community for embracing us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
All I can say is that I am honored and I am truly humbled because I never thought that this was the path that my God was going to lead me down. Because I always thought that deep down inside, I had a rather militant outlook on our parent society. Needless to say, I was proven wrong time and time again. If I have touched anyone's life to open their eyes and uncrust their hearts for diversity, inclusivity, and justice for all, I am very grateful. Thank you.
We have someone on Zoom who might want to.
Oh, I wish you could see the smile on his face. He had a wave into the owl.
We unmuted you.
Wait a minute. Congratulations, this is Tom Miller, part of your, part of your fan club down south in Des Moines. What a great careers and what great contributions you've made and what a nice recognition. I'm, I feel that I'm off to a good start this week. I'm two for two. Yesterday, I was at a wonderful program for John Sarkone, honoring John Sarkone for his public service of 47 years. And you remind me of Wayne, you remind me of John's great service. And both of you remind me of my father. My father taught me that, that public service was an honorable profession. And it was an honorable profession because you serve the public. And if it's an honorable profession, you have high standards, you have high ethical standards. And you and, you and John exemplify that so well and bring, bring, bring to mind. And Wayne, you also, you also brought such goodwill to everything. You know, it's always fun to see you, you'd have a smile. And I'd, I'd run into you at political events and we'd have, we'd have a nice visit. In fact, Jessica pulled out a picture of us at one of those events a few years back, my pack raid memories. But you know, what, what you've done for Story County for so many, so many different people is truly remarkable. And Edna, I didn't, didn't know you quite as well, but I certainly know you and, and, and recognize just the immense work you've done at civil rights and other areas. That was, that was incredibly important and also inspiring to us. And if anything, we need uplifting and inspiration these days. And this event and much more importantly, the lives of the two of you are uplifting and inspirational to us. So I, you know, I'm happy to be part of, be part of this, part of this recognition because, you know, I think so much of the both of you. And, and I know that so many other people, particularly my friends, think so much of you. Speaking of my friends that think so much of you, Jessica, why don't you jump in here?
Thank you, AG Miller. Well, first I want to thank the supervisors for recognizing Wayne and Edna. Let's see, Felisa and Lundy, you're doing such a great job and I'm so proud of all three of you. And Wayne and Edna, you have been a personal inspiration to me and to my family. You have inspired hundreds of thousands of people throughout your lifetime. And something that I find truly remarkable about both of you is that even though you've been through a lot of unfairness in the past in your life, you haven't closed off your hearts, you've kept your hearts open, and you've kept wanting to engage with everyone in the community to make the world a better place. And I can promise you that you both have made the world such a better place and that I know you'll continue to do so, and I love you both.
You can cry. You don't cry in meetings, guys.
Is this right there? I'll suck it in.
It's cool.
Yeah, let me go first then. Yeah. One, two, three.
Can I do that? Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Knock yourself, ladies. Make your stomach go in.
This is my neighbor.
Thank you.
And please let me acknowledge Jane. We served 10 years together on the board. And then Marty coming here, what, we were there, what, four?
Seven.
Seven? So going to show you my age now, I forget. I want to thank you guys also so much for being here this morning. Appreciate it. You bet.
Story.
And I see a few of my close friends from Minneapolis is on, my fraternity brother, Tari and Leon Hill.
Hello, hello. Congratulations, we could not miss this momentous and outrage, much deserved honor. Blessings to you both.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being to be here. This is very special thing. I'm just going to run and grab a cleaning. Okay, moving on. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Mental Health Month.
And the proclamation is titled Batch Basics. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there is strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being.
And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month in Story County. We also call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools within Story County to recommit our communities to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. I move the May Mental Health Proclamation. Moved and seconded. Heads. Aye. Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing May 9 through 15, 2022, as Economic Development Week.
Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers attract or retain, retain, I mean, high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their communities, states, and regions. And whereas the creation of new opportunities for businesses and entrepreneurs is a key component to securing Story County's economic future for generations to come. And whereas Story County is committed to fostering a business climate that will attract employers, enable the county to grow and remain competitive on a global scale, and generate new jobs and opportunities for our citizens. And whereas the Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Commission, Nevada Economic Development Council, the Story City Economic Development Corporation, the Huxley Economic Development Corporation, and the Story County Economic Development Group are all committed to providing quality resources to boost economic growth, enhance quality of life throughout Story County.
Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 9 through 15, 2022, as Economic Development Week in appreciation of all of our partners in the economic development field who will help, who help make Story County the vibrant and thriving community it is today.
I move adoption proclamation.
I second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edna. Aye. Basil. Aye. Moving on to agency reports, we have Primary Healthcare's annual report, Marissa Conrad and Nathan Simpson, and Dr. Taylor Posler.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Good morning, yes, you can.
Well, first I just want to thank all of you for having us on today. And I know that they've already left, but a big congratulations to the Citizens of the Year awardees. That was fantastic and really glad to be present for the meeting to just witness that. So with me today, I have Dr. Taylor Posler. She is our dental director and also has provided services up at our Ames Clinic for the past several months. I think as, as most of you are probably aware, we've been in the Ames community, serving Story County overall for the past several years for medical services and behavioral health. And just, just got done really providing services for dental for the past year. We opened March 31st of 2021 and it's been, it's been going great. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Posler. I'm sure you want to hear from, from somebody that's actually doing the work. So she can, she can articulate that really well.
Well, thank you, Nathan, and good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for having us here today. As Nathan mentioned, I'm Taylor Posler and I'm the Dental Director for Primary Healthcare. But I also practice clinically in our Ames location and I live in Ames as well myself. So as Nathan said, it's been just over a year since our dental clinic opened in Story County last March. And since then, we've seen a steady increase in the number of patients we've served. Our team has provided care to an average of 206 patients per month, with 73% of those individuals insured by Medicaid. The remaining 27% of those patients are self-pay or have private insurance. And most of our self-pay patients qualify for our sliding fee-scale discount program, which does significantly reduce the cost of services provided. I think one of the most exciting parts of our Story County location is that our dental clinic is integrated into our medical clinic. And this is an effort to provide better whole-person care to our patients and especially the underserved population that we're here for. So part of that integration is that we have begun tracking the number of patients referred from medical to dental and vice versa. So since January 1st of this year, approximately 20% of our adult patients have seen both a medical provider and a dental provider at PHC. The number is a little bit lower for children under 17. We're only at 5% right now. However, building and expanding our medical-dental integration program is a strategic focus for primary healthcare over the next three years. So we do expect both of these metrics to climb as we build and refine these processes. And finally, I'd just like to share a patient story with you all that I feel really highlights the type of care we provide at PHC. So earlier this year in our Ames clinic, I had the pleasure of seeing a patient who I'll call Sam today. And Sam was in for an urgent dental exam. He had severe tooth pain and had really been struggling to find an affordable dental provider for many months in the area. So he was happy to be in our chair. And while treating Sam, we not only discovered a broken tooth that was causing him pain, but he also had very high blood pressure and felt comfortable disclosing to us that he was a former addict and had been struggling to maintain his sobriety in recent weeks. So that day, we were able to treat his tooth pain, but we were also able to refer him over to one of our primary care medical providers to address some of his other concerns. And he came back in to see us and was just in a much better place when we saw him that second time around. His tooth pain had been resolved. And he also let us know that he was now on blood pressure medication, which had helped with the chronic headaches he'd been experiencing. And now is receiving counseling support to helping keep his sobriety. So that story is not unique. We provide dental services to patients like this every day in our community. And I think in particular, myself and my colleagues in the dental clinic recognize that oral health is an important piece of an individual's overall well-being. And so really on behalf of myself and my colleagues at PHC and our patients, we're so thankful for your support of our mission, Primary Healthcare.
Thank you. Just one question, maybe for a statistical statistic. Your report says that, is it the dental team provides care to an average of 206 patients per month? I wondered on the medical, how many per month approximately? Do you have a figure?
So I don't, I don't have an exact figure for you right now. I can tell you kind of generally, so I would say on average, we serve about 900, 900 visits, patient visits per month between medical and behavioral health.
Medical and behavior. And then the additional 200 is dental.
Correct.
There might be some overlap, I assume, but.
That, that is definitely our hope, is that there's overlap.
Yeah, and that is, that is a good thing. So, okay, that, that's helpful to me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just have one question as well. I see that you, generally you serve people on Medicaid. You also serve some that are on Medicare as well. I know it's easier just to reference the Medicaid portion, so I just saw you possibly serve folks on Medicare as well.
We absolutely do. I don't have that specific statistic for you right now, but yes.
And it's, and certainly we serve people with, with any payer or no payer. So we serve patients regardless of their ability to pay. But we do have a mix of Medicare, Medicaid, and a lot of commercial insurance as well.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions. I just, I just want to comment on how important the work that you do is. And dental health is medical health, is mental health. And I think the service that you provide by, by treating the whole person and being there at that, at that one intercept point for folks. And then your ability to spread your service out, to touch so many different important parts of their lives is invaluable. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Because I, I know it saves, it saves lives.
I do, I have one more question. Do you have any guess as to what percentage of the people that you serve are homeless, unhoused? Do you keep statistics on that?
We, we do. I don't have those prepared for you right now, but we can certainly get that information to you. And, and I would just note that we collect that information at patient registration. And so we, we do that based on a definition of whether, that, that homeless definition is very. And so we, we do that based on a definition of whether, that homeless definition is very broad for us on the, on the medical and dental side. So that could be somebody that's, that's truly homeless, that's in shelter, that's doubling up, which constitutes a large amount of folks, probably more than, than most people realize. And we also have a homeless support services program that we operate out of Polk County. And that definition is a little bit different. And so I don't know for the Bridge Home what their definition is, but typically HUD's, HUD's definition is truly homeless. So they have to be literally homeless, not, not doubling up. So I can certainly get you our definition from our system, just how many patients that, that would comprise in a given month.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what Dr. Posler said. Thank you guys so much for your support. We're, we couldn't do this work without, without the support of the community, and, and we're really grateful for it.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of minutes. We have minutes from April nineteen and April twenty-sixth. Minutes presented. Second. Moved and seconded. Edens.
Hi.
Merkin.
Hi.
Basil?
Hi.
Consideration of personnel actions.
What personnel actions is supposed to?
Second. Moved and seconded. Edens.
Hi.
Edens.
Hi.
Basil?
Hi.
Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda items as listed. Second. Moved and seconded. Edens.
Hi.
Merkin.
Hi.
Basil?
Hi.
And we have public hearing items. We have First Consideration of Ordinance Number Three Oh Three, revising the established meeting precincts in Story County in response to federal criminal census in Chapter forty-nine, following the view of State of Iowa.
Right. So I know Supervisor Merkin is excited to see maps. Scratch off the presses these yesterday afternoon. So what I have brought before the board today is Ordinance Number Three Oh Three. December twenty-eighth of last year, we passed Ordinance Three Hundred, which was our plan for the new precincts following federal census. I know I talked to the time, and this was a dramatically delayed process for counties. I think the federal census was delayed as early as twenty seventeen. And the state actually went through two different plans. They did not change any of the deadlines for counties. And of course, so we were working with the January fifteenth deadline when we passed that ordinance. I will say that none of this process compared to what it was ten years ago is ideal. It was stressful. It does not allow for the public input that I would like to see and that I'm sure the public would like to see. But it was done legally, and it's, and it's done. What happened is we turned in our plan, and then we didn't hear from the state for over two months. This is a problem when you have ninety-nine counties all submitting a plan. Many of those counties are Plan Three counties, so they actually had to go through the LSA to draw those. So I think those were given priority. We're a Plan One county. So most of our plan was good. They, they did make some technical changes. A lot of those were due to the way this, how the sense, the census re-precincting and redistricting process works versus the annexation process, which are not compatible, shall we say? So my conversation with the state was that this is our imposed plan. It's what going into effect, what we are doing now is cleaning up our paperwork to match the imposition provided by the state after reviewing our original ordinance. So instead of forty-four precincts, we have forty-five. Biggest changes were in Story City, which I could go over for you, but it's mostly really boring stuff about census blocks. And I do have, we do have maps. I would like to thank my staff for getting all of this done, not just my election staff, but our real estate staff who went over this and checked boundaries and things. Because what's already been in place is we have updated the statewide database to reflect this because we had to send out our military and overseas ballots by April twenty-third. So basically, once we got the plan from the state, our, our priority was to, to get that into the database so we could hold a legal election for January seventh. And now we are basically crossing Ts and dotting Is. Not only do we have our ordinance today, but we have updated memorandum of agreements with our cities. Ames had to pass new ordinance because they had to change, like, they get east to a west in their ordinance. But I was actually glad we're updating that because we had, it's sort of a temporary numbering of precincts, and then we had a numbering of precincts, and then Ames renumbered its precincts. But I think our memorandum was, had the middle numbering, numbering system of precincts, which, so that's cleaned up. Again, the, the biggest sort of technical changes were in Story City, where instead of just cutting it across at Broad Street, we had to take the stuff on the eastern side of the interstate and add it to this precinct and then account for it. Census block, it touched a county line and separated some Howard Township. Like I say, really dry stuff, but sort of fiddly and technical. So Ordinance Three Oh Three reflects all of these changes as imposed by the state. Most of our plan was good, but we did have to make these fixes. I'm sure the public would like to know how it's being informed of these changes. Like I say, we've already updated our statewide database. Everybody's registration has been updated to reflect the changes. What's going out and should hit mailboxes on May eighteenth is a notice of polling place change. We are, we are piggybacking on a statewide mailing. And it says due to redistricting, your polling place for the June seventh, twenty twenty-two primary election may have changed. So most of our polling places that we used before, we're using again, but it doesn't mean you are assigned to the same polling place. So this is basically, it's a householded mailing. It goes out like this. And then it has just for the household, this is your precinct, this is your polling place. Here are some QR codes to help you find more information on Secretary of State's website.
Every registered voter in Story County will get one?
It's a householded mailing. So this is, this is not a official voter registration mailing. So ten years ago, we sent out new voter registration cards to every registered voter in Story County that went out in early February. So you can see already the timing.
Yeah.
Laws have changed since then. I actually cannot do a mailing like that. So we do have to notify of any polling place change. The time period is very specific. It can only go out, I think, between twenty and seven days prior to the federal election. So there will be a mailing like this for both the primary election and the November eighth election, same type of mailing, because we have much greater participation in November election. Usually in a primary election, and we have to throw out twenty twenty in this case, we get single-digit percentage turnout in Story County, and that's because the students are gone. And, you know, only about half of our registered voters are actually registered with a party, and then the only percentage of those actually participate at our partisan primaries. So this is a householded mailing. It's not an official voter registration mailing, which means if it comes back with a yellow sticker on it, I don't have to inactivate voters.
But it's only to households with the registered voter.
Yeah, and I think that includes active voters, inactive voters, and pending voters. So.
That was a question. Thank you.
And it's a postcard?
It's a postcard, front and back. It, it's, it's coming from, you know, it says official election mail. A lot of times, people will throw, people will throw their voter registration cards right in the trash sometimes, too. So I'm going to put this out in a press release closer to that date so that people know what it looks like. I'm sure the Secretary of State will do the same. The, there will always be voter confusion after, you know, this process. It was, I remember it in, ten years ago, when we had a timely submission of all this and plenty of space to do it. That was also a presidential year, so there was a little more heightened awareness and a gubernatorial cycle. It's, you know, our voter participation is, is not the same as in a presidential year. That year, a lot more people participated in caucus because it was a presidential year. That was super fun because we caucused under old precincts because it happened before January fifteenth. I don't want to bore you with, with my trauma tales. But so, but there is always, always going to be confusion. Every ten years, whenever you do this, the, the compressed time period isn't helping, let's put it that way. So I'm working with Matt Boych to have, we have our polling place lookup to sort of make that really dynamic, where, you know, you look at that, it tells you this is your polling place now, and this is your sample ballot for the election. That's not live on our site yet. We're still tweaking that to make sure that it's updated. So there's a lot of chicken and egg stuff here, right? You were asking about maps. I'm like, I don't want to do maps until I have an actual full plan. But when we finally got the plan, we had the, we had different priorities. So none of this is, is ideal. I did publish notice that we are having a public hearing. So you can pass the ordinance today and waive the other two hearings. That's up to the board. This is, this is an imposition of changes onto what we already adopted. So it's not like we're contemplating other changes at this point in time. But I'll leave that up to the board to, for its consideration.
I'm sure it's like here is it's going to be a postcard going out to all the council.
Yeah, and it will go out for this election and for the November election.
And that's regardless of whether their polling place has changed?
Right. So.
So it may say.
Right. If you live in Ames, certainly you're, the numbering of your precinct has changed. Probably your state rep has changed. That, that line is pretty different. For me, I went from one rep to another. I also went from Ward Two to Ward One, just for instance, you know, just. And my polling place has also changed. It's a polling place we've already used for many years in Story County, but it's different from the one I went to for the last ten years. So there's all sorts of rules about elections, about, you know, postage of signage. And certainly, you know, so that's already going to be posted on all polling place doors. But people naturally go to the last place they voted. And I'm expecting, like I say, this is a fairly low turnout election normally. It's really hard to, especially when you write after a redistricting process, to even know what kind of turnout we're going to get. Hard to say. So but if you do go to your polling place and you're in the wrong place, our, our e-poll books actually will give you a little slip saying, oh, this is where you go, and this is the polling place. So people don't like to hear that. They don't like to, like, go someplace, park, stand in line, maybe, and then be told you're in the wrong place. But we do have the information for them. So if you have any question, like I say, we're not sending new voter reg cards to people. So what they have does not have their current polling place information on it. That has to, anyone that wants a new card is, has to request one from me. I cannot do a countywide mailing without the, that's, that's a legal authority I no longer have. So FYI.
Will be sufficient for identification of goals?
No, this is just notification.
No, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because that's just tied, that's just tied to you, right? So your, so your registration has been updated. If you have a PIN card, it's still going to know, know where you are, what precinct you're in.
Okay.
So, yeah.
They don't have to request a new one.
Right. But what they don't have, absent this mailing, is an official voter registration document saying this is where they're registered. Whether that makes people anxious or not, I don't know.
Well, whatever we can do to answer the questions and kind of reassure people.
Yeah. All I know from ten years ago is no matter how much information you have available, it's never enough. So that's true of just about anything, but especially in the case of, of this process. Every ten years, we go through this. So. And because we are a growing county, we have more changes than, say, more static county. So, I mean, which is a good thing. But growth is a good thing until, until you get to voter confusion.
Just for clarification, though, if you have your registration card, that is not the same as having a photo ID.
So the way, the way voter identification works in Iowa is you have to present either your driver's license or non-operator ID, or you can also, those, that's, that's how you register. You can also show proof with a passport or military ID. But if you don't have an Iowa driver's license or non-operator ID, then you get a PIN card. So this is how you register. You either register with your driver's license number or whatever's on your Iowa ID, or you register with the last four digits of your social security number. So like, my mother gave up her car and it has like a non-operator ID. So when her, when her license expired, she basically was generated a PIN card. That happens after ninety days because they give you that. So you either have your license, which, or you have your PIN card. You register one of two ways. So anyone can get a PIN card, but you have to ask for it. But you either have your license or another form of acceptable ID, or you have your PIN card. If you don't have anything, there are a lot of branching things from this. You can come to my school of instruction. I can explain all of it to you. But yeah, you would only use your sort of Iowa-generated card, your PIN card, if you don't have a license. And that's still good, even though your precinct has changed or been renamed. Maybe it has been changed, you know? Cameron Judean Township hasn't changed, right? But like, I was in Ames Two One, and now I'm in Ames Two in Ward One, which sounds the same, but it's not. So, yeah. It's a lot of information for people to absorb when they just sort of like, I just want to, I just want to go to the right place and vote, right? They don't want to hear a lot of backstory as to why.
So great. I'm sorry. We'll open up public hearing. I guess it's time to whisper that if anyone would like to make comments. Forward to microphone. No one raise their hand or step forward. We'll post public hearing. Motion on ordinance number Three Oh Three. I would move adoption of ordinance number Three Oh Three on First Consideration, lighting second and third. Second. Moved and seconded. For the discussion. Okay. I, Edens.
Hi.
Basil?
Hi.
Thank you.
This year. Yeah. I'm proud of all my work and.
Well, all hail to my staff. I mean, Kevin, Kevin Norris and Rhonda Sykes and their people, which is everybody who sits in the outer office. And just, you know, nothing against those, those back in finance, but they have, you know, their regular duties of claims and payroll. So, yeah, and then proofing ballots for the primaries is also fun because there's a lot of changes, and we wanted to make sure those were all reflected. So it was, there was a lot going on. There's always a lot going on in the outer office. This year is no exception.
An unbelievable amount of work goes on.
We just hope it's all done correctly because there's, they give you no quarter for error either, so.
So it looks like your next also consideration of updated memorandum of agreement with cities of Ames, Nevada, and Story City to comply with election precinct changes imposed by State of Iowa.
Right. Right, so those are our little tweaks to our plan. I will say the cities have also been really helpful in this whole process. Again, we are fortunate enough to have large enough cities that we need to have more than one precinct in them, which is good. It means. And we have more of those than we did ten years ago. But it is, you know, the ordinance process is never a short one, and then. Would like to thank the city clerks that I worked with on this process. They were very. Comedy and helpful, especially during our, this is just like the cleanup, but we were doing this in December. Which is, you know, a time of year where people sometimes like to take vacation or short days. Or there might be snowstorms.
And there are new people coming on to council.
Yeah, so there was a lot, there was a lot going on for them, and they were, they're, all the cities were really helpful and great to work with, so. City clerks are, city clerks wear many more hats than auditors, so I'm just in awe of what they do anyway, so. We've got some good people out there working for our cities.
I just have one question for you. Looking at the Ames, city of Ames memorandum. I just want to make sure your numbers are probably correct, that it references Ames precinct sixteen.
Yeah. So instead, right, so instead of, here, here's just a map of Ames. So instead of. Reason we did this is Ames is in four wards, as is Nevada. And then Ames is big enough that inside every ward, there are a number of precincts, so. In previous years, we were able to. When you were in the legislature, right, so you had wards, I think, two and four. What, what happened this time around is Ames is now in three legislative districts, and the line is not clean enough to sort of give. We really, we just had to sort of throw that whole idea of I could make the wards match the legislative districts. That's just, that's just. A thing in the past now. Also with the statewide database. Even though we had Ames numbered, like Ames one five, Ames two four, things like that. This is just a database, so you have precincts one through, we had precincts one through forty-three. Now we have precincts one through forty-five. And people were always like, this is, I'm in precinct six. I'm like, oh, yeah, that's two one. I mean, I can do the math in my head, so. We just went to straight up numbering. So your precinct. Does, no longer gives a, any clue of what ward you're in. You're just going to have to. Find that out through other means. So, and we went from twenty precincts in Ames to twenty-four. So the Ames precincts are numbered one through twenty-four. I mean, there is a little bit of a clue, so. Precincts one through six are in Ward one, precincts seven through. I'm like, I can't do math right now. Seven through twelve are in Ward two, precincts thirteen through eighteen are in. Ward three and nineteen through twenty-four are Ward four. So you can, you can figure it out that way, so. Because everyone's like, what does this mean? I'm in Ames one five. Which is actually, that's Wayne Clinton's precinct, his old precinct. He's now in precinct eight, so just to, just to use a different example than me. So, and then we have. You know, the legislative back came over and took out this sort of southeastern corner of Ames and put it in a. And Washington Township and put that in a legislative district that's mostly in Boone County, so that's, so. You know, we're, we're actually in five house districts and three senate districts now, so. And that made the map a little harder to divide as well, I should say.
Did you say there were forty-three or forty-four precincts before?
There's forty-three, and now we have forty-five. So. Yeah. So, yeah, probably the most, people with the most questions are going to be in Ames because those, those boundaries change the most. So.
Story changed quite a bit, and Gilbert and Franklin are now separate.
Gilbert and Franklin have to be separate because Franklin Township is too big to join with Gilbert. So again, you know, where we have growth, you can probably see by the number of precincts we have in those areas. And that, that mailing I talked about is supposed to hit mailboxes on May eighteenth. Or sometime, somewhere in that vicinity, so. And that, again, cannot send that out any earlier than twenty days prior to launch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of twenty-eight agreement with Stories County Animal Control and City of Huxley for Animal Sheltering Services. Good morning.
So I'm here today with a twenty, a draft twenty-eight agreement with the City of Huxley. The Huxley, City of Huxley currently does not have a building or a place to take their stray animal pickups. This particular contract is different from our other twenty-eighties for animal control with other cities within the county, as this is only for animal sheltering services. And so I propose that we do offer the City of Huxley a place to house their stray animals at the Story County Animal Shelter. And didn't know if you had any questions about. The attachment there for the twenty-eight.
Have you had any sheltering, strays from Huxley before?
No.
They've been doing.
In the past, they've contracted with local veterinarian clinics, but that option isn't available to them anymore. Right, yeah.
So enforcement there will continue to enforce their ordinances and pick up the animals.
Yes. Yes.
I'm assuming that the county attorney's offices had a chance to.
Yeah, I worked on this with Ethan.
But move approval of the twenty-eight agreement with Story County Animal Control and City of Huxley for Animal Sheltering Services, Children's Services as. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of Ames Urban Fringe Draft Land Use Designations and Framework Map and Public Outreach. Morning. Okay. So I have a presentation of the draft that we'd like to do outreach on for this Ames Urban Fringe Plan. So the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, I know we have talked about this many times, but again, it's a cooperative agreement between the county and Gilbert and Ames. It's partially kind of like a subdivision code and partially kind of like a future land use plan. And so when I say it's like a subdivision code, cities can review subdivisions within two miles of their boundaries. So anytime someone divides land within Ames's, this bubble, for instance, they have review authority. They could require city infrastructure be installed. It could waive that requirement, or they could just say no. Ames doesn't have, you know, priorities to see all of that land developed. So it makes sense to have an agreement with the county for where they would like to have review authority and where we would like to have review authority and maybe where we should share. And that goes for Gilbert as well, because they also have review authority within two miles, and Ames's bubble and Gilbert's bubble overlap, so we have to figure out. Who has authority there and come up with provisions for that. But with that, you know, from a planning perspective. That the idea of who has review authority over a subdivision is a pretty simplified concept of what the plan is. Because we also need to think about when is a subdivision appropriate, what kind of land uses are appropriate. And so that's why it's kind of like a future land use plan. It's an adopted component of our C two C comprehensive plan. And when we get to the final adoption of Ames Urban Fringe Plan, it will be re-adopted as a component of that comprehensive plan to help us better. Guide the types and locations of land uses as well. Why is it important? This is a map of requests my department got for can I divide land, can I re-sown a property? Larger development requests. For the week of April fourth, we had twenty requests, half were in Ames Urban Fringe. So we need a guide. Next slide. I also want to show why it's important. In terms of working with our cities to make sure growth is orderly and efficient, so this is the northwest side of Ames. You can see in blue, there's some city growth area that Ames would like to grow into. But then you have these subdivisions immediately to the west that kind of limit where that growth can occur. We also have. A church at the corner of Cameron School and George Washington there that, you know, the city doesn't have any review authority over. It was the county who issued a permit for it through a conditional use permitting process. And so there's, there's other things that we have to look at from a land use perspective in this fringe plan of what makes sense for. Where we're placing things and what design requirements should be in place if it's an area the city, a city might grow in. And then from the county's perspective, it's important too, because when we're looking at rural developments in areas we have review authority over. We also need standards because, you know, if we're citing large new developments, it can create congestion on roads, you know. These are on septic systems. They don't have city infrastructure. It, you know, removes agricultural land and natural resources. So we really have to be conscious, and the plan is a good way to be conscious of where we're citing these. Because this is an area where our county is seeing a lot of growth. Um, so. What I'm going to present just briefly are draft land use designations. So within the fringe plan, there are different designations. Each designation shows if annexation is supported, if you can divide a property. Who has review authority and other policies for appropriate land uses. County staff has taken the lead on drafting these. They're, we've worked cooperatively with Ames and have presented these to Gilbert as well. But from the county's perspective, when we went and drafted these, it was, you know, we looked at Ames's twenty forty plan, we looked at Gilbert's comprehensive plan. But we also looked at those priorities that you all took action on in January. So I think today, we're not really looking for modifications. Just a general move forward with public outreach and then any feedback on, you know. Hey, this land use designation really isn't what we were thinking, what. What we were thinking when we adopted a priority, for instance, for focusing housing growth within municipal boundaries. I think all the priorities that you all set out for us are met with the draft land use designations, but I just wanted to put this slide up there and remind everybody. This was, this was staff's charge, and this is what we worked off of. Okay, so the first designation is agriculture and farm service. This is basically. An area where the county retains review authority. We have a generally a thirty-five acre lot size because most of the land is zoned A-one agricultural. If an exception to that lot size requirement were met, we would allow a division to allow somebody to build on a smaller house, a smaller lot. But the remainder wouldn't be buildable, so we're not creating any new density. But I think that this differs from the current plan, and we're allowing a little bit more flexibility to allow a smaller lot size because. You know, I don't want to say building on one acre is affordable. But it provides more options. Okay, rural residential existing. This is our next designation that the county has review authority over. These are existing subdivisions, so Cameron Estates, Bella Woods, there's. Some on Timber Road, just to the east of Kelly as well. So, within this designation, currently, we've got a couple different rural residential existing housing designations. They do allow divisions. There's different density standards, and what we're proposing here is something more simple. You can do one split. To create a new house if access and other standards are met for, for that development. Ames isn't really looking to annex these areas, so no annexation without a fringe plan amendment. I do not anticipate that we will see very many of these lot splits. You know, these are existing platid subdivisions. A lot of them have homeowners associations that disallow that. A lot of them are built out of, at a pretty good density. And I, I was trying to think, I think I've seen two, maybe, in the past five years. Of someone trying to split an existing, you know, subdivision lot. So I don't think this is going to have a big impact, but it is just allowing just a little bit of flexibility.
And none of these, when you look back to Ames twenty forty plan, none of these areas were in their tiers.
No. They're not. These are all outside of the areas that Ames would see future growth. And Gilbert's growth area as well in their comprehensive plan. Okay, so rural residential expansion is a new category that county would have review jurisdiction over, and this is if you would like to cite a new subdivision. The Cameron Estates in Story County. We did not map any of this on the plan. Instead, we have proposed introducing an amendment process where if you would like to develop a new rural residential subdivision. You have to meet certain standards for where it's located and go through a full amendment process where each cooperator takes action on allowing that. Because, again, this area, it's an area we're cooperatively planning in because our decisions impact the other cooperators. And so it's important that everybody is on the same page about traffic impacts and have our growth plans changed. So if you could go to the next slide, some of the standards are that new subdivisions should be adjacent to existing. This is because clustering is important when we're thinking about limiting the fragmentation of agricultural land. The area is not an area that a city has plans to grow into in the short or long term. There's a limit on the amount of agricultural land that you can request to be amended to this designation, forty acres. That's about a quarter quarter. Should be on a paved road, and the developer may be responsible for any traffic improvements required. The, it could be on gravel road within a quarter mile of paved road, but again, the developer might be required to pave it. And we really need to look at our housing study when we're citing these and consider the amount. Staff did an analysis based on the housing study needs projection, looking at available subdivision lots in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Area, looking at the amount of permits we've issued, and we anticipate the need for maybe sixty additional lots. Within the next twenty years, so that's thirty in the next ten. That's not a whole lot. That didn't even account for. The seventy lots that have been approved in Prairie Valley outside of this planning area, which I would say probably still have an impact. And there's some market demand for the folks that want to live in the fringe in a rural residential setting. I think Prairie Valley probably fits in there. So that that sixty lot number doesn't include those seventy lots, so I think that's. Pretty limited, and we need to take that into consideration when we're entertaining amendments to this designation. Questions on that? Okay. And then the other designations are urban growth areas, so this is an image of where Ames's would be located. These are areas where Ames would, where Gilbert would have review jurisdiction because they are areas where utilities are available. Or the city has made a commitment to make them available because these are the areas where it makes sense for them to grow. Annexation would be required before any division of property. And we are proposing as a strategy for after the plan's adoption to look at our county ordinance. And make sure that our conditional uses or other standards for commercial development aren't in conflict. With how these areas could develop in the future. So through the fringe plan, we're not ceding any zoning authority to either city. But it could be a strategy at the end of the. but it could be a strategy at the end of the plan to take a look and make sure we're our zoning ordinance is compatible with this designation.
That's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then urban reserve is similar to urban growth in that city growth could occur in this area, but this is very long term. So it's an overlay over that ag farm service designation. It does limits divisions of property because I think that this is the area where we could see a lot of pressure for rural growth. And it's important that we prevent premature development of these areas because if we don't, we might see issues with the conflicts like I showed on that first slide with, you know, the church and the residential subdivisions and city growth areas. So that's where this designation.
Well, as a practical matter, what does the term overlay really, is it really going to mean?
Yep, it means there are further restrictions on the agriculture and farm service designation.
So it's agriculture, farm service, yes, and additional restrictions because it's an area that may be looked at for urban development.
Long term.
Long term and some things that could happen in the meantime, but prevention.
Exactly. Yep.
I could easily see people leaning out that direction just to kind of move away from the city.
I think the other part of this designation, again, this is just a draft. So this is just, you know, what, what staff came up with to get public feedback on. We could allow annexation of land in this designation if infrastructure were available or committed. City infrastructure. But that's something we are going to get public feedback on and, you know, can really consider what the process should be for annexation of land in this area. Okay. And then we have other overlays. One's an environmentally sensitive overlay. I want to give a shout out to my staff because they put a lot of work into making sure that this actually lined up with where natural areas were. Looking at GIS layers before, we had really big swaths of green on the map that it could include, you know, 100 feet of a cornfield and they were designated natural area and we didn't know how to deal with that with the plan. So now it's an overlay. It gives us more flexibility and it's a little bit more accurate and it would limit development within that area in the county. We also have an airport protection overlay and a subsurface mining overlay where Martin Marietta is and Ames Airport. And those are really just indicators for staff about when we're citing land uses, don't forget that, you know, there's mining going on below the surface or you're within a certain area near the airport and tall structures might obstruct flight paths. Okay. So next steps would be we'd like to do public outreach, you know, 30 days of public meetings and have an interactive survey tool, get some good feedback, come back, we'll compile that feedback. I'll bring it back to board of supervisors with some recommendations on how to integrate that into a new draft. And then other cooperators would do the same. Gilbert and Ames have recommended moving forward with public outreach at this point. Gilbert did have some really good input on the urban reserve between Ames and Gilbert. And so that will be integrated as part of the public outreach as well. And we can consider how to, how to put that into another draft. Our Planning and Zoning Commission did also recommend outreach. We did receive several public comments at that meeting about the urban reserve being too restrictive. And specifically, I put it up here, there's a subdivision southwest of Ames that matches urban growth because if the city were to annex some property to the west that has city sewer and water stuff to it, this subdivision might also need to be annexed to meet state code requirements on how annexations work. Yep, so it's not. So that will be integrated as part of our, you know, report on how the public outreach goes and make a recommendation on, you know, what to do.
You're going to send postcards to everybody in the urban fringe, all landowners?
Yes.
In the urban fringe?
Yep.
And what's your timeframe? When do you think this will all happen?
Yep. So we are working on, you know, the land use designations that were in your memo. They're, they're good when you get a presentation to accompany them, right? But we're working on a little bit more user friendly draft with some how does this work, you know? And so I'm hoping to have that done next week for posting. And then we would send out notification. Probably a week before the first meeting, we'll probably do a public forum, like a formal presentation by staff and then have a public forum and then have two drop in meetings that are a little bit more informal where you can ask staff questions, meet one on one. And then we'll have that interactive survey tool as well. It's a map where you can zoom in on your designation and click to see what it means and draw and leave a comment. Two weeks, either be probably the 16th. Is that two weeks? Yeah. So then, yeah, the public meetings would happen last week in May, early June.
The drop ins? Will they be, are you planning to have them here or?
No, we're planning on having them in locations in the fringe that kind of makes sense for reaching different folks that live in those areas. Right, yeah. I don't have, I don't have all the dates nailed down yet. I really want to get, I want to make sure the draft is ready for when we send the postcard.
And you're going to give people the option tending any of them?
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking people, if you have one in Gilbert, for example, which I assume you will, folks who are not Ames would be more likely to go there. Then if you had a South Ames location, would be good for folks down in Mount Kelly, Washington.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we're not, we're not going to say this is the South Ames meeting. We're just going to have meetings in different locations. So, yeah.
That sounds cool.
Yeah.
And then people, people can always submit comments online.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have a form online that you can just submit comments through as well. Yep. Yeah, I appreciate the feedback we've gotten from folks this far and Gilbert. And I think it's clearly time to do some broader public outreach and get that input and continue moving forward.
Wow. I know this is a tremendous amount of work.
So if you, I guess, just give me direction to start public outreach once we have a more user friendly draft and then we'll circle back after that.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
It's just direction. We don't need a motion.
Great, perfect. I will send you the meeting dates when I have them.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah. Great, yeah, thanks.
Next, we have consideration of funding requests.
Suggestions. This is probably going to be a longer discussion, so why don't we, we take a five minute break?
Certainly.
Certainly. Yeah.
Hey, we are back after a five minute break. And I think we'll move up the departmental reports since we know the next item is going to be a rather lengthy community services quarterly report.
Good morning.
Thank you for moving us up. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Supervisor presence.
That was a great idea.
So I brought with me today Erin Rewords. We thought we'd break this up a little bit. I'll have her talk about the general assistance side of things and then I'll do the rest of the report. The period for the report is January 22nd to March, January 2022 to March 2022. So I'll turn it over to Erin.
Okay, and I haven't been paying attention over the last million years about how Carla does this, so if I do this. Sad to say, I haven't paid attention. Okay, so we have, this has been a nice, nice quarter, actually. We've been able to level off a little bit and things seem to be returning a bit more to normal, I would guess, I would say. We have between the single, single people and families, we had 39 households that we saw. So primary types of rent assistance or of assistance, excuse me, for rent, we paid out $17,023 in some cents, utilities 586, and then a couple burials at $6,099. Those are all, I think, pretty standard numbers for us, especially on the funerals and that kind of thing. Applications over the quarter, we had 300. Substance abuse services, we served three. And then SSI interim, we did have someone, I think just that first month of January that we assisted. And then centralized intake has really, we brought on Jen Kearns in January. And so appointment wise and stuff like that, that has become much more manageable. The workload has become more manageable also. And we've been able to not, I think maybe the last time we talked to you, we were still scheduling appointments out, maybe even sometimes two weeks or pushing three, yeah. And that's not the case anymore. We're more like in the three to five day range. And even at the beginning of the month, we're doing pretty good here, which is, tends to be our busier time. So that has been exciting to say the least. And Jen and Wendy have been able to do some good work with some people and get a little bit more involved. I know our service coordination numbers don't really show it yet as far as like the, the 90 day case management kind of like that we'd like to get with people. But we're getting to the point where that's now something that we should be able to get some people going and, and be able to follow through. I think even with some of our standard applicants, they're probably doing a little bit more than what they normally would do also. So that's nice. Let's see, so for rent and utilities total, as far as requests that have been approved with Good Neighbor Salvation Army and ourselves, we're at about $71,845. Also, one time, I think in the past few months, somebody wanted to know how many applicants we had in Ames area versus like the, the other communities and that kind of thing. So I broke that down for you a little bit. We finally got to figure out how to run that report with some assistance. And, yeah, so I thought that was kind of interesting as well. Obviously, the bulk of the applicants are in Ames, but the 51 applicants from the surrounding communities are all of them. All of them in Story County are represented either once or sometimes Nevada probably has more like around 10 or so of those. But even your Kelly, your Zering, your, you know, some of the outliers. So, yeah. Any questions?
Carla couldn't adapt it. Right, I was sitting here thinking that myself. For, on the MHDS side of things, so with CICS, we have been working with staff and member counties on the transition to the single employer of record. A lot of work is going into that. Again, that transitional took place 7-1. We have been working on leases, ensuring we have access to the internet and phones and all of the county offices and that. Overall, I think it's going pretty smoothly. Also been taking inventory, so we've been able to identify county owned property, CICS owned property and that. So I think I've got that figured out pretty well for our office. Have been able to identify like our, my laptop is county owned, so working on ordering a new device for me or we have ordered in that. Copier also is of course county owned, so we've got to order in for a new copier in that. Just got a new printer in yesterday for Tyler for over at the JL. So I think we're getting those things in place. Hopefully the copier will arrive in time. There's of course a backorder on all of those things as well. But the company that we're looking to work with has, thinks that they could give us a loaner to use. So one should come in. So I think we'll get that squared away. I've been working with Joby and Ethan on a lease, so hopefully looking to bring that to the board here very soon. We've got space identified within the office and that, that'll be designated CICS space. Been working with IT staff on internet service. We've met with a couple of different internet providers. So hopefully too, once we get that lease squared away, then we can get an agreement with CICS and an internet provider. Let's see, there's still many things to do. I know we've been working on the general assistance ordinance. Erin and I have the GA policy. We've met with Alyssa and Sandra on the job description and that as well for the general assistance director. So we're looking to bring all of that back to you guys here. All of that will need updated. Do you have any questions on the transition?
So the copier can't, it can't be a shared copier.
No, because the, my understanding is the county's copier is networked.
Oh.
And we don't have that ability on that network. Yeah. Yep, yeah. It's.
There's so many issues that have come up because of it, yeah.
Yeah, when I've been thinking about this and working through this process, when you look at it from the bigger picture, it doesn't seem like it's going to be too daunting. But once you start breaking it all down and really getting into the weeds on things and stuff, there is a lot that has to take place. Really, I look at it almost as if we're setting up a new business, even though we're, we're in existence, but we need to have that capacity to operate on our own, basically.
And I think that was kind of part of our discussions at the governing board of just knowing it's going to be more than what you think.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there was an acknowledgement of that. You have to look at the extent until you start building in there.
So do you feel pretty good about the progress right now that it's on track for July 1?
Yeah, I think so. Yep, I think so. I need to connect with Ethan on some things yet and that, so hopefully we'll get that in place. One thing in talking with Alyssa is what date do we do that transition? Because 7-1 is in the middle or it's at the end of a pay period. So do we look at trying to do something the beginning of that pay period? And so those are conversations we need to have and work through yet. And of course, we'll certainly bring all that back to you guys, but yeah. I do get nervous some days because there is a lot to do yet, but we'll get there. It'll happen, so I'm confident in that. And what we don't get done, we will clean up.
What you can do and clean your stuff later.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's been, yeah, a lot of thoughts been put into it and a lot of work.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
She works very hard.
Just a couple other things there to note. Our FY '23 annual service and budget plan, we did get that done. It was submitted to DHS. If you want to take a look at that, it is on our website, the CICS, mhds.org website. And then also something new that we're working on. We've partnered with other MHDS regions in the state for CIT crisis intervention training. And we're bringing in trainers from Texas, I believe. It's Solution Point Plus. They're very skilled in this area. And so they will be doing, I believe it's four presentations or trainings at Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. And then there'll also be in other regions. But they're going to provide three trainings in the CICS region. The first one coming up here in July. So that's for law enforcement and first responders. We're excited to get that going.
Is this the same group that presented that last year's ISAC?
It is, Joe and Jesse. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I sent out right at our CEO meeting to the sheriffs and police departments and sent that information right.
Great, thank you. Yep, the more they can receive it, the better. Tyler's certainly, he's reached out via email, sent the information we've mailed and then your outreach. So, yeah, I think, I think Russell told me one of the first people to sign up was from Iowa State. Or ED, so, yeah. Looking forward to that. And then for the quarter, Erin had 51 interviews with veterans or surviving spouses. She's been very busy as well.
Last quarter, just in case you were wondering. That was kind of strange. That was kind of strange.
Any other questions for us? Thank you. Thank you.
We want to go ahead and, um, have Lisa Markley present. The last, if you want.
No, I can, I can go, I didn't see, you know, but I think when I put myself on the agenda, your other requests were not on there.
Right, right.
So I knew I was supposed to put myself on the agenda, so I am, so there you go.
I'll be bringing a budget amendment next week, um, so I just pulled the numbers from the budget amendments that I'm working on. So this might not be the final, but this is the best guess, the best guess we have right now for fund balances on the, um, projected ending fund balance for June thirtieth that I gave you. Um, so if you look at, um, unassigned, forty-one percent of the general fund, twenty-five percent equals fifty-seven hundred, so we have about three thousand six hundred, um, over and above the twenty-five percent. Okay? Um, unassigned lost rural funds for the end of FY twenty-two is the four eighty-two. Five forty-three, um, at the, at the end of our budget for next year that we've put together, it'll be two eighteen. So, um, that's our estimate right now. Obviously, it's going to depend on how much local option sales tax dollars come in as to how much that will be, okay? Pardon?
Can you say that number again, that you expect it to be at the end? Since it's four eighty?
Oh, so, so my reestimated budget right now, which is on this sheet, uh-huh, down there where it says FY twenty-two unassigned lost rural is four hundred eighty-two, five forty-three. The budget we put together for next year, at this point in time, we show that there's going to be two eighteen. Unassigned. Um, that is what we will start with, and then we go, depending on how much we get for local option sales tax and how much dollars are unused in the current year. And then, um, so I tried to give an update of the ARPA dollars. Um, if you look to the far right, it says the total amount that we're getting is the eighteen point eight. I have, I have internal and external projects that we have approved. This is directly from that spreadsheet that's on the S drive, okay, so the numbers are dumping in from there. Um, which totals eleven point six million. Revenue loss that's used, I, I put in that sixty-four thousand that you put, you guys agreed, or you wanted to do for the cameras in here. So, right now, we view sixty-four, three, we've said we're going to use sixty-four, three, fifty-nine. So the total unassigned unused funds of ARPA is seven point one nine.
And that's the seven point one is the revenue loss.
That's what I would call it, yes.
Okay. Yeah.
The, our report showed revenue loss of up to ten million. Um, so this is what is not assigned yet, so I would say, yes, that should be part of the revenue loss. That's my opinion. Opinions, who knows?
But regardless of whether we counted the revenue loss or actual, but compliant, that's what's on the sign.
Correct, correct. And, um, with anything that you do with that revenue loss projects, um, the reporting is way easier if we do it as the revenue loss. Um, I think some of the things I've read, and I'm sure you've read, is that, um, as long as they fit into the guidelines and you want to do them as revenue loss, they should, it should be okay.
But we shall have to, it still has to be used on you extended by December.
Yes.
Of twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
So that's the important thing to think about it.
Right.
Is it doesn't.
Right. Correct. Is this helpful, do you guys feel like this is what you wanted from me?
I have one question, but I think this is.
Okay, that's fine, that, I'll be here, I'm not going to leave, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah. I was not finding, the, you're saying the the local unassigned loss is four eighty-two now, but you're saying in a year you're projecting two eighteen, is that correct?
The budget we put together was two eighteen.
Okay, but it's part of the field house, not the loss, right? So that's where it's reducing.
Part of that, and part of it is, um, the, the local option sales tax that I budget is based on a five-year average. It's been higher for the last two years, so I, I, I think that probably off on the, on the local option sales tax received, which is a direct, which directly then affects how much the forty percent is.
That's your first payment to the field house due.
Next, um, I've got it on my desk. I want to say, beginning of next fiscal year, I did talk to the city and, and said, you know, what, what's your, what's your schedule like? And, and so it's going to be budgeted in our budget twenty-three and twenty-four, and they will invoice us at some point after the beginning of fiscal year.
So is it two hundred thousand each year for two years?
Two years, right.
Okay, so that would be about the difference.
I honestly, I'm going to tell you right now that our local option sales tax revenue has been going up, so my assumption is going to be that it's going to be more than the two eighteen, but I'm.
Yeah.
It's all, all an assumption at this point in time.
Sure.
That's what a budget is, is a guess.
Reacted on the conservative side.
Have you met me?
Yeah.
And on your, and the three point six.
Correct.
Okay, so, moving backwards to for consideration of funding requests for Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center in Ames, we just want to go through them one at a time. Or did you want to talk about them?
Can I make a general kind of statement first, or just?
Sure.
Just some of the things I've been thinking about. I've been looking a lot at the public purpose, um, issue. Um, starts in the Iowa Constitution and through various AG's opinions on, um, local government funding needs to be for an identified public purpose. I'm just going to run through some of my notes, may? Because I, I pulled up things that I thought were important for us to consider when we're looking at funding requests. First cannot be strictly for private gratification. As the question, is a public interest being served? Um, how does it affect the public welfare? Um, any funds appropriated by a county to a nonprofit corporation must be applied to those purposes set up by statute. Um, and it's good to make some findings or at least some, some discussion of the public purpose underlying expenditure if it's, it could be considered to be in doubt. Um, I think those were the basics, I got, there were some examples. Um, let's try about promotion of public health, preserving and good public welfare, comfort and convenience. Construction of buildings for education or athletics, those are just some examples, but I thought they did some of the things we were looking at. So those came out of some summaries, um, particularly from that county supervisor's manual that ISAC puts out, as well as some, some, um, things that were sent to me by our county attorney's office and some things I looked at on the anonymous website, so. So I think those are just things to keep in mind as we look at these. I, I also, to me, it's really important that residents throughout Story County, both the unincorporated as well as the smaller communities and incorporated areas, as in addition to Ames reserved. So those are some things that have been going through my mind that I just thought I would throw out. Thanks for letting me channel it out.
Well, we want to go one at a time through the requests then. So, Fitch Family Indoor Aquatic Center in Ames.
I think it, um, does fit the public purpose. Um, it's instruction of the building for athletics, promote public health, et cetera. Um, I'm cognizant that with the city of Ames, um, no longer having access to the pool at the high school, that it would be the only indoor pool open to the public in Story County. And I think Story County is a large enough county that certainly does necessitate or makes sense to have an indoor pool. At some point during the discussion, um, and, and I, it, it, it's a discussion that morphed from healthy life center into the indoor aquatic center when they, when, after the first bond issue failed. Um, there was discussion that Story County financial contribution could mean that, um, residents outside of Ames would be, have access to the same fee schedule as residents in Ames. I've not specifically asked that question, but I've kind of been assuming and hoping that would still be the case.
I know that was specifically discussed at, at different meetings, different board meetings.
I'm assuming that's still the case, and I, I would hope it would be, yeah. I would too.
Yeah, I remember us having some of those discussions as well, I think. Also, if that is a direction or something that we want, we want to fund this. That could be something that we put out there, that that's what we would like, send this, they need the same fee schedule as well, just send it out there. I do recall, a while from when this was first, the first request came before us, I believe we had letters of support from other communities as well for this, not attached with this one. Like I said, I think it's about the third time this is for us, and didn't think they needed to reattach letters again. Um, and I do know that, um, at this particular board necessarily, but boards in the past have also funded other aquatic centers, outdoor pools, or help, help fund that as well. So it isn't a new type of request before us. Roll in the pool and help. Roll in this later. Roll in this later. Well, and this is significantly reduced request from the very first.
And they're looking at, they said that there are force cost overruns now, which is, is very much expected, but also looking at a cash grant, and, uh, county participation is required.
Community attraction of the tourist.
Oh, it's community attraction, tourists, exactly, right now.
Yeah, that's.
It's the C.
That'll be cat ran, yes. So, um, I'm in favor personally of Story County providing some funds, we could talk about it now. And as you say, it is less than was originally.
Also not asking for ongoing funding as they were initially.
No, they're not.
Oh, I actually would be in support of, I'm sorry, I'm writing my notes down, of, um, writing some funding as well. I do think it meets, again, we've shown in the past that this is a project that has been funded in the past. Will be the only indoor one for the county. Just looking at whether we continue to have, um, provides that opportunity and accessibility to the general public that are not eligible or not able to provide some facilities that I think.
Another, another, um, thing that I, I heard recently was some of the, the outdoor pools, the previous outdoor pools, they're trying to get their lifeguards and all their, you know, certified, you know, ahead of the season and the outdoor, without an indoor pool, they can't get that done ahead of time, right? So I think that's a way that it not only, you know, gives the indoor facility, but does help support some of the outdoor pools. How's everybody feeling about this, do you know?
Would they start with a million, two million, and then to fifty million?
And a million and fifty thousand a year.
Right.
The healthy life center was a lot more, but that was a lot. Right. Continue to grow as they continue to talk. So do we want to condition it? Right, fee schedule?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I would support that, definitely. That was, that's been my concern the whole time was, not just.
I would move that the, um, Story County contribute five hundred thousand to the construction of the indoor aquatic center in Ames because we believe that it does fit the public purpose criteria. As outlined in many attorney general opinions, and I would condition it upon, um, the fee schedule for Story, non-Ages, Story County residents being the same as for Ames residents.
I would second that. Should we vote on each of these individually, or since they're all under one item, just wait until the end? I would prefer we do that.
I have them individually.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who would you suggest?
I think you have raised.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest general fund.
I think so, we don't remember, we do not know what the construction schedule would be on this, so maybe.
Just general fund or the? It's just general fund. If it's revenue loss, if it's ARPA dollars.
Our proper revenue loss general fund is what you're.
It's just general.
No, it's not just general.
Right. That, that, that's why I asked.
Our, uh, general rural.
Can I ask a question?
You might just want to come out here.
I'm sure we're going to be asking you questions for help. And Greg, my question is really for you. If you've come up as well.
I'll be helping.
Yes, ARPA, it's a separate.
Of the general fund, but it is a separate pot of funds.
If we were to use ARPA funds for this, would. would you think that December twenty twenty six, judgment, construction schedule, or do you think they could utilize that money and have it off by December twenty twenty six?
You're talking about the final deadline on the ARPA funds allegations? Yes, so the allocations on December thirty first of twenty twenty six is concurrent with the current schedule, yes.
Sent, not not allocated.
Not spent, spent and finalized, correct, yeah. So I don't know if any of you three saw the the event last week on the announcement on the naming and the fundraisers. So on twenty twenty six is the current schedule, you you should be fine. That is why the request is being made for the CAT, because the CAT is also being applied for in the requested letter before you of the county match being used. ARPA dollars can be used for that category as well, so there's no conflict with that. Anything, so that can be counted as your match.
Do you want to move to amend my motion to expand the source?
Oh, sure, sure. So I would move to, or if I could make a friendly amendment, would be to have the the revenue loss, ARPA revenue loss be the funding source.
I accept your amendment.
So. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
All right.
I, based on.
To stay?
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I'm here for any of the ones.
I I am here because every one of the communities being requested is somehow touching my line of work, so yes, I am staying.
Okay, next we have work the Bartlett, Public Library. Expansion projects.
I do believe that that meets the public purpose as well. And the other, the other thing that I had as a criteria for myself was that residents throughout Story County unincorporated as well as smaller communities have access. My understanding of libraries and 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 we smartly, and I was talking about a little bit over the break, it's you know, you can get if you're an unincorporated, if you're the unincorporated area of the county, they don't we don't think the libraries have districts and say, well, let me serve somebody. If you're anywhere in the unincorporated area, you can get a library department. So.
Right now, if you look at the unincorporated area alone, don't have their own libraries, they're generally within a say, a community, a city.
So, and they and they always do, the libraries always show, you know, give us those statistics, how many people they served in the unincorporated areas. So I think it is, you know, even though there's a lot of benefits in cities, to our city of this, there's also benefits to people in the unincorporated areas throughout the county. But that is my criteria there.
Yeah, maybe a number of things for online accessibility as well.
If there's been one positive with COVID, it's been libraries really stretching into new resources and using online sources to reach kids that might not be able to have transportation to the facility. So their outreach has gone far and above what it used to be pre-COVID.
I I might, there's two things that I've been thinking, one is they gave, when they gave their presentation, they said Story County was loving a hundred and twenty, sorry, city, Story City, I'm sorry, thank you, loving a hundred and twenty thousand. The request for us is for a hundred and sixty. I'm trying to think about proportionality there. I'm not sure where I come down on that, but I'm wondering if maybe the hundred, hundred and sixty feels a little high to me. That's, that's all I was, I was feeling about.
Be looking at more of a equal, like one twenty, one twenty, or like a one forty, one twenty.
I was, let me go back and I I want to look at their presentation a second, I'm trying to think what they said about. And I'm not saying that, you know, people in Story City, Story City are obviously county residents as well, so I'm not, you know.
Well, they also service Gilbert.
Right, they do, they do, I'm very aware of that, so I think. And I did kind of struggle with what's equitable or what's proportional, and I I don't know that I came up with a good, you know, formula or methodology of saying that.
So Greg, the Endow Iowa Grant, in their presentation, they say, our request from Story County is a hundred and sixty, which would allow us to apply for the Endow Iowa Grant. Is that the minimum? Or how does that?
Yeah.
Is that like, oh, it has to be a X?
It's a percentage, and I think it was an earlier conversation, myself and supervisor Heddins had, is that these local matches, the ratios are going up, especially in relation to ARPA dollars, because they're trying to stretch the ARPA dollars. Destination Iowa was a great example, you know, it came out as this is a hundred percent funded, and now it's sixty percent, sixty percent, sixty percent for all the venue options being, you know, and that is pledged money in your project before you even apply for Destination Iowa. So I think the reason they came up with that specific amount is because of the local metric markets.
And the and the different percentages.
And the different percentages, correct.
You know, I've seen a couple. One of these had their budget in. Project estimates are three point one. Rest two. What did you say in Endow Iowa, there were percentages?
Uh, I was saying in regards to a lot of grants, and especially connection to ARPA dollars, those local percentages have gone up. It used to be much lower threshold for local matches, but the ARPA dollars are stretching things, and a lot of grants are changing to allow higher local matches because they know the dollars are there in ARPA and other, in other resources. I was just trying to look it up here. Donors to community foundation may receive a tax credit equal to twenty four percent of the gifts, maximum credit of three hundred thousand. Tax credits to this program can be claimed by individuals, businesses, or financial institutions. So that's Endow Iowa. So my guess is, is that it's part of the local matching, and it's specifically designed to offset and tap the fund, local funds that are raised for it.
Yeah, tax credit for donors from transmending application. And use of that as a natural requirement.
I would guess is the timeline is immediate on the fact being that to meet the decided timetable for there is August first, construction plans put out for bid.
Maybe I'm looking for some information. I too, I see the language where a hundred and sixty thousand would allow them to apply, so I'm just wondering. I don't recall from our conversations, I probably have to go back, that was a question we had asked, is that number clean? Because they've already figured out the percentage. I I just don't remember that discussion that may have been, I just can't remember.
That is how I took the presentation when he came and presented the request to you for the special funding in Endow Iowa is through the community foundations. So the Community Foundation grants to Story County, my guess is, is that that's the percentage of the local match to specifically get the leverage, the money they want out of that organization.
What's your deadline? One grand.
Their deadline for applying for the grant, well, currently there's a waitlist for the Iowa tax, for the Endow Iowa tax credit.
Open ones.
Yeah.
There's no deadline, like, applications must be received by blank, and then we'll stroke, and we're looking at, we're looking at a minute to get them.
Yeah, so.
I think it's the ultimate, the money's gone, it's gone, is that right?
Correct, that's why there's a waitlist in twenty twenty three already. They are looking to hit that window for the construction schedule for this fall of twenty two. So the waitlist has already gone out for twenty twenty three, according to I E D A.
What do you mean by waitlist?
So that is where they have a waitlist of projects to wait for funding.
Oh, gotcha.
So projects that have already proposed, they utilize their funding, they've already exceeded, like you said, therefore they're on a waitlist for the next round of tax credits to be issued. And to be fair to the state legislature, they still won session, so they're, they don't even know how much they're gonna be getting yet.
You know, we should tell Lucy, because she can't put the guy together until she knows that they've invested in her.
Did you say that? I'm sorry.
I said if you did know that, you could sell the information, so.
But I'm making a motion, Greg, that we want to go on to the next one and come back to. I don't, I don't know, I don't see how. I mean, I'm finding, you know, but I don't see how putting it to the end is gonna help anything.
Would you like me to step out to try to contact them and get a, and get a specific?
I would appreciate that, just to know, they said a hundred and sixty, yeah, where did they get the number?
Yep, I can step up.
Thanks.
I know they're still hungry.
Next one, stepping stones. That's at the daycare. This is giving me a lot of comfort. Yeah. I guess for this one, I look at that it's, daycare is a need, it's a huge need. But it's a private business, and that's my concern, is that private business meet that public.
I think it's too bad that it, that the loan issue did not work out, because I think if it's a loan, you're loaning taxpayer money to help create jobs, I saw something that said that would be acceptable. But if it's not a loan, if it's a straight out grant, you've got to look at the fact that if it's a for-profit business, that that kind of converts taxpayer funds to a potential profit. And I think that's, that's what's giving me pause. I think, I, yeah, there's no doubt it's a need. There's, don't they have the squall of the assessment, you know, said later was one of the areas was a childcare desert. It just doesn't seem to fit with public fund. That's my concern. I, I, I don't know if they've looked for other partners offering some capital to their project, we didn't ask them that, I I hope there's some potential there, but I I can't see it as a use of public funds. You could, you could make a public purpose argument, but I think it really stretches it when you get it into the private, funding a private sector. And there's nobody competing now, but, you know, we could, if we make, set the precedent, we could do that, we end up with potential of sometime having somebody you know, asking us for money that's competing against another business, and I can get this all in.
I'm also, I wasn't sent to that they actually needed to know the kind of thing. She needed to know, yeah, she, I believe she was able to get her deadlines pushed out a little bit because we were considering it, so, yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna make more changes.
It just, I'm, it's, it's it's a great need. I just don't know that it fits. It's, this, Paul was presenting to us. We do have to make a decision, though.
So.
That's all I'm supposed to say, I always determine my motion. And I'm not making a motion.
Make a sense.
I expected we, huh? You can take, you can take the action, okay. I just prefer to say, no, actually, we can take it on that application. Moving on to part of senior services. All talk with director and board members on the project. Who they're wanting to serve.
Yeah, that was, that was one thing that I just led us with, is that I felt like we, you know, what are you doing throughout Story County, and so we're a Story County organization, I said yes, but when we're looking at, you know, funding for a facility, it's going to be in Ames, and I can understand what facility has to be one place in the county, and Ames is where two parts of the residents are, I understand that. But they did develop a plan. That was very, and and the director presented it to me about how they could, and F Y twenty five, expand services into Nevada, Story City, Huxley, and then eventually in smaller communities. And I first said, well, has your board seen this? That's well known, I said, well, I would feel much better if your board had seen it and was on board with it. And then next time I was presented with more official plan, and the board chair and the director both said, the board has seen it, the board is for it. Next thing I asked was, how many board members do you have outside of Story County, or outside of City of Ames? And the answer was, well, we don't, they're all living in Ames. And my next question was, how many do you have coming up in the next few years? And I was twelve, two to three, and I've since recruited two people in categories, they said they wanted board members, and they're from outside of Story County.
Outside of Ames.
Ames, thank you, I'm, yeah. Thinking too many things at once, they're in the role, or, you know, in the, in the, one from Nevada, one from Collins, and I'm also working on some folks possibly from Story City and Huxley who might be interested, so. I've asked them to do some things, quite frankly, because I thought I couldn't, couldn't look at this unless I was convinced they had a plan to expand services in Story County. And I'm convinced they do have a plan, and it's in their budget, it's in there, you know, as soon as they get this built, they will turn to that. You know, as soon as they get this built, they will turn to that plan. So I'm feeling comfortable that there is going to be, there are going to be services, more services for unincorporated people. And, yeah, that the facility in Ames will also be open, you know, but we all know that seniors, a lot of times they have transportation issues, so the more you can get services out to those walls, the better. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of us.
I think too, I mean, part one does a part two with Mary really, why the meals on wheels throughout the county. You know, for some, it is collecting those wheels, maybe at a community center in some of the smaller communities, and being able to have their meals collectively there. For some, it seems like large Portland, let's say, with their building stuff, and they're going more to further partner with the local communities. And their services that they offer. For some people, that person delivering the wheels on wheels is the person I see today. So, I have an option. And that was, I just didn't really talk, talk about that, so I just wanted to. Looks caught on the top of my head. The dollar question, each of the other ones, so.
Did we have, the best, I'm sure we did somewhere down there. We have a list of what other entities are providing to them. I know the city of Ames is not providing them cash, but is, is giving them the land. Which is valued by sign, but they're not doing.
It's the land that they were already sitting on.
Yeah, which, yeah.
And I think it's a, it's, it's a, um, it's like under a 50-year. I'll be honest, it's, it's work, so, it really does.
Yeah, yeah.
It really does burn me, it really does burn me.
I, I talked to Nancy about that, because I said, you know, what's the city doing? Well, they get this land, I said, where'd they get the land? Well, they bought it with the C D B G grant.
And this is where the property's been sitting, right?
The land that they were already sitting on, right?
The land they're already sitting on, city bought it with C D B G funds, not with city. I, I said, Nancy, would you go talk to the city? And she said, I will, and she came back and said, no, they think that's fishing. So I, it, it, it bothers me. I wish the city were digging into its own pockets for this, because, yes, the land, I mean, one, one way you can say, yeah, the land's valued a whole lot. I mean, it's hugely valuable land, but, you know, and, and maybe there's other things that the city's done with Portland all the way through here, I don't know, you know, but it did, it kind of, right, it kind of bothers me.
Yeah, I don't hope there's other things that they're doing, or being that.
They maintain ability, or things like that, or nine years, I don't know. I, I didn't get, I didn't take a deep dive into level, justify this more, but. And I think, we, I, that's probably something we're not going to be able to anything about. Just went on record.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we go on record.
But we can't, we can't, we can't influence, we can't really dictate decisions to others without funding. I see that, my, my thought is that, I think this is vitally important, that we have more services to seniors within Ames and throughout the rest of the county. Because we are an aging state, we're an aging county, one of the hardest things that people face when they, as they age, is staying in their own homes and having support, having social ties, having all the support. And Portland Senior Services can do that, has more potential to do that. So I'll make the motion to move the by $300,000. Towards the new center, I hearten senior services for Story County. Funding source, funding source again on our, the, um, assets. Red, red, and white.
I'll second it. You can second it, and so the discussion. All right, that's high, faceful. One question for Lisa, as we're determining or making suggestions for where we would want to finance these programs. When do you find out, or wouldn't you have a better idea of where we are with loss? Would that be? When in the year, if you have, like you're saying, you're projecting now about.
Well, we got, so, so when I do the amendment, when I do the first budget amendment in F Y 23, which is going to be August, probably, typically, I hope I will have from the, um, Department of Revenue, that, the projections. That's when I typically have that, so I have a better idea of August.
And I only ask that is that as we're putting some of these into that general revenue loss, if for some reason we're finding some other information out, or whatever, we still have time to see amendments and have it under laws or live it under a different funding.
Right.
Yeah, were you able to, right, get an answer, right?
I was, um, the number they came up with was twofold. One was a percentage of what was provided to Nevada for the field house, and the other one was part of the financing package the city put together on their grants and other applications. So that is the number that was provided by advice of Story City.
Also, it's, it's how Nevada, when they did that field house, the percentage of past, that they used us, how they did their calculation.
Is how they did their calculations for the ask for, for their project in Story City. So it is that reasoning that is what was given for that dollar amount.
What is that? Well, and I think that all, well, it's Nevada, when we reduce their requesting all. So, I'm not sure how that all.
I think they asked for six.
I think so.
Two hundred, yeah, three years, and then for two years, that's because I was thinking, right, three years, and it was, right, right. Okay, that does sound like the grant, and they're still, they're still looking at a grant application, and they're still, I think, raising funds for this. I'm concerned, in fact, there are a lot of public libraries in the, in the county, and we might, you know, I don't know what asks we might have in the future, and when we just run out of money. You know. I would make a motion that we match the Story City contribution, in other words, 120,000, and that that comes from the general revenue loss.
We can second it, any further discussion? Okay. All right, head inside, face all, all right. Next, we have Ames History Museum Expansion Project. Can I say Sharon here? Sharon can answer this question. Sharon, is this, how did, how did?
I'll let him move if he wants.
Or, yeah. How did you calculate the dollar out? Is that the percentage? Do they know your plan for grant?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I was just, I, I'm just kind of re going back as to how you came up with that particular dollar amount. Was that the amount needed for the grant, or?
There is no specific amount in terms of percentage with this, with this grant, it's so new, we're, so frankly, we, we picked a number that seems reasonable to us. Because there, there's no formula, even as we've asked a number of questions in the week since, time since I was here. There, it's still a gray area.
We, we don't, yeah, we never know on grass. I, that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure I have as many questions as you do.
Yeah.
Or more.
Yeah, I would have pulled up your, actually, you provided it for our last meeting, and I just didn't see and didn't recall. So you're, those are talking about, is there?
Yeah, we did not do a formula like you just discussed, and, and I know this is a much lower percentage than the whole Nevada field house thing, but.
And the city of Ames is giving 150,000.
Correct.
Did you ask them for more?
That is the amount we asked them for, and they agreed to fund that amount.
Well, a couple of things I was looking at, and it's not trying to find reasons, it's just a couple of things I was looking at. Forty-two percent of the history museum visitors are from outside of Ames. We also know that there are historical, there are museums throughout Story County. This is primarily an Ames History Museum. I, I guess I can't see funding more than the city of Ames, too.
Yeah, that's kind of thinking as well. I would make the motion that be 150,000 out of general revenue, law, party general present loss for the Ames. What's certain? Can you second it, any further discussion? Hi, look at, hi, face all, all right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your support.
You are welcome, thank you for the.
Okay, next we have the Island Nature Trail. They're looking for a tree billion to match the state tourism grant, likely this is one that they shifted the percentage to be for a year. Yeah. So the request is for 3 million. We were to fund less than 3 million, that you have other sources you could pull from to still apply for that grant.
That 3 million would get us to the city of Collins. And probably with that grant right now, Destination Iowa Grant, it's awarded on rolling basis. They open up awards starting May 5th, excuse me, May 9th, or open up applicant, application period, May 9th. It's going to be exceptionally competitive. So, I, where we're going to score the best is if we can say we've completed it across the county. Do I have other, do we have other funding sources available in that timeframe? No, we do not. We have another grant application in right now for another phase, we haven't heard back on it yet.
You speak up just a little louder, just have a little heartache during.
Sure. We have another grant application that's out right now that we haven't heard back on. We won't hear back on it until later this summer. That would do a portion of this as well. So if we receive that back, if we were to move forward with the 3 million, and we receive that other grant application, then we would have some that could go back toward the pot, if you will. So as of right now, where we stand, the best chances of success is to move forward with an application to get it paved all the way to Collins. And, yeah, as you know, Collins has been very supportive of late, all the cities have been. We wouldn't have been able to kind of garner the success we've had thus far in paving it nearly halfway across the county right now. You know, the vast support, complete support from all the cities. Collins has been exceptionally energized lately in trying to get it wrapped through town and to be included in this. So, the effect you may have heard from, from mayor, from the mayor on that. So I know that they're very interested, and again, what we'd like to do is, is the full 3 million to get it to the city of Collins.
One question that I would have is, is there a significant problem getting it completed? Because we've been doing a lot of point for a long time. Is it going to be a problem getting it completed by the required deadline?
We won't have any problem completing it, we own all of that. So there's no gaps in connectivity. West of, excuse me, east of Collins, there is a gap in connectivity. But to the west, there is not. So we could probably, we could complete it all in 23.
So what's the plan east of Collins then?
What's that?
What's the plan east of Collins, how many miles from Collins to the county line?
East of Collins, I haven't, I'm not sure how many miles that is off the top of my head.
But wasn't the goal to get it all the way to county line? Now, here's just to get to Collins.
This gets to Collins.
Is that the goal?
Eventually, no, eventually, we'd like to get it connected all the way to Marshall. But right now, we don't have the real estate, all of the real estate necessary on the east side, on the east side of Collins.
So let's get you just on the west side.
This is from the west side, connecting, giving complete continuity into, to the High Tressel Trail, to the Central Iowa Trail Network, et cetera. From Collins westward. With, again, the large, the, the large, long-term goal of getting it also completed out to, if you will, Highway 330 into Marshalltown and south to Jasper County.
Four miles to the county line. Thank you.
That'd be another couple million.
Um, 1.4, 1.7.
We have the land for.
So that makes it more than.
1.7 for the trail construction.
Then adding the land on for those four miles.
Then adding the land on for those four miles.
We own a good share of that already. What's that?
We own a good share.
East of Collins, there's one, there's a gap essentially from the city-bound border to the west or to the east, excuse me, maybe a mile, mile and a half. But that's not included in this request. And then a portion of that four miles is already, there's a trail constructed and managed by Marshall County. I believe they come into story about.
And where's the trail road in Marshall County?
Oh, good question. Roads, I believe. I believe it goes to roads.
It goes to roads. So we're connecting with something that becomes, that puts bicycles on roads.
No, that's roads as a city, roads as a town. Roads as a town, yeah, not a city.
Is it paved all the way to roads?
Excuse me?
It's paved all that way?
No, it's gravel.
It's gravel. What's the plan there?
Well, ultimately, I think Marshall County would like to have that paved as well, ultimately.
But that's what, I guess my question is, because your proposal is to the west. And that's to the east, but my question is, what's the, kind of, the? What do you see kind of the long-term? If you're wanting to go to the east, are you looking at, looking at that in your front hour? Is that like two, three years down?
I, we've been prioritizing from west to the east. And so if we can get it done to Collins, then we can put our, more of our effort into getting that connectivity solved between Collins and the Marshall County Trailhead that's in Stewart County. So, you know, I, I'm not sure, I can't give you a crystal ball on when we could get the, the land rights, if you will, or acquisition, if it comes to that, for that portion. I don't.
No, no, that's, I just will ensure in your planning process, were you looking at kind of pursuing that right away? Or was that like on your, I'm not looking at our.
Yeah, no, I would say.
Is it five years down the road?
Yeah. As I said, the city of Collins is very interested. And so as soon as we can, as soon as we can get it up to Collins, then our next focus is going to be on to that kind of gap in connectivity on the east side of Collins.
You suggested that she have a grant application in. Who's that, what agency?
The, I'm sorry, Linda.
The other grant application you have that you won't hear from till later this summer?
SRTA. That's SRTA.
And how much is that for?
I believe we asked for 200,000 there.
That wouldn't even do a mile, would it?
No, we've got. That would take it from 610th. That is about a mile. That would take it from 610th to S14, which is 620th. But that's not, that doesn't cover all the cost of doing it. We have a cost, we have a cost.
You have a match to cover the rest of the cost?
We do have some match, correct. We would hope to apply for additional grants as well, to keep leveraging that match.
But if, if we funded it three, if we approved three million, we wouldn't have any reason to be applying for.
Correct. I wouldn't apply for additional grants for that section of it. We would move right into design stages. If you were to approve this, we'd move right into design stages from S10 to Collins. And so therefore, if we, if we got the SRTA grant, if we get that, then that, that money could become available to lessen up the request or to lessen the ARPA usage.
If you did any type of motion, you could do something up to three million or something contingent on.
I would do the up to.
Up to.
I wouldn't mess with the rest of it because.
Right.
Yeah. That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to fund some clarification. That is not partially for trails also. So.
And the 700.
So. And we've got that.
674,000.
And the Conservation Board originally set aside 800,000 of that to go for trails. That was our initial seed money. That 800,000 is now turned into 2.6 million. And so we've, we, with completion of the phase, right now that we're, the, the latest one that we've been granted that wouldn't be included in this, yet to be constructed, but has been granted, and that is from Cambridge or the river out to 610th. That phase is going to use essentially all of the DAPL money to get that one done. And so now we don't have that seed money moving forward anymore. There'll be, you know, there may be, there may be a little bit left. When I say a little bit, it's, you know, less than $100,000, which doesn't go very far. But. But yeah, so we were able to get that. So give you an example, the paving that we've done thus far from Slater to the Skunk River. That's cost roughly 2.6 million. Of that, 5% came from general fund. If you count DAPL as a donation, then 24% came from donations, 70%, 70, more than 70% from variants. I think we've been very successful at leveraging, and that's our intent would be to leverage this to the, to the best ability we can. I will also say that the, some of the grant sources that we've been relying on too primarily, we have been awarded these grants for now four years, I want to say three years. And the rest of the, the review committees are starting to say, we've, we've been giving you money for a while. I could see them saying, you know what? It's time for someone else to have some money as well. So.
Just money a few months ago.
What's that?
SRTA just granted you some money a few months ago.
Yeah, that's the request we haven't heard back on yet.
That's the first one we did.
Well, we may. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. So I, I guess my crystal ball is that moving forward, A, we're, we're out of seed money. And B, I, I don't know that we've got as high a chances of success with those traditional grant funding sources as we have had to get this far. So. That's why we think that this provides the highest percentage of success, if you will, the best package, the best foot we can put forward to get majority of this trail paved to the. And get all of our, get all of our cities connected to it serviced. No, not yet. So we have, we have plans for it. We've been awarded 674 in what we call Phase 3B, which again is that phase between Col, or excuse me, between Cambridge and 610th Avenue.
So that's where that money is going.
That's the 674, or that's the Phase 3A, excuse me, 3A. 3B would be taking it from 610th out to S14, 620th. That we would roll into this project.
I would just plant up the record that the attachment on the agenda is from March October 8th. Natural applications for the full five million. Just for the record, that's not what Mike is requesting right now. He's requesting 2 million, 3, 3 million to get 2 million for the chocolate. 3 million out of the RPA funds.
So. Board moves or decides to do this, if you don't qualify, or if you don't get the 2 million from the other. It's off the table.
Thank you for that question. My preference would be if we don't get the Destination Iowa Grant, that we continue to use this investment with ARPA as seed money to continue to slug away at other grant sources that are available, using this as seed money.
My only concern about that would be that it has to be committed and agreed.
And that becomes, that becomes more of an issue.
Yeah. You have other funds for said DAPL. Could be used as part of this match.
All of our, all of the other funds are identified for other, other services, if you will. So we don't have any undesigned.
So I guess my follow-up question to that would be how many? How many projects? Can you juggle at one time? And maybe other projects need to be de-prioritized to prioritize this one? If this is, if this is the one or two.
Yeah. I understand. To maximize, to maximize this one. We would continue to look at, at all available grant sources. So our typical grant sources that we've been using for trails are, are SRTA. Trails Enhanced, Trails Enhancement Funding. State recreational trail sponsors and federal recreational trail sponsors. Those are the three primary ones that we've been looking at. There are some other, you know, the CAT grant, perhaps, it's a possibility that's last in. And so if we, you know, if we move forward, if we don't get the Destination Iowa Grant, we can, we could look at, well, what can we apply? And I think CAT grant is a 65% local match necessary. So one option that we could look at is, okay, where can we, if we don't get Destination Iowa, we could use ARPA to perhaps match that. 65% requirement from CAT. And how far does that get us? You know, we could look at it that way. But rest assured, I think you know our department, we look at every venue possible to try to bring in outside funding. So we, we would continue to do it in that vein. If it came that we were not going to be able to get outside funding or to get other funding enough to utilize all of the three in the timeframe, then, you know, then we wouldn't do that. And we would give, we would make sure that that you had the time necessary. If we couldn't get it done, if we would make sure that, that you would have the time needed to then handle that.
Like, that's something that leads me to, what do we move to approve? Or not? Like that ability to continue to look at match. Always look at saying, oh, we'll provide you this amount for this grant, but then come back to us. If you don't get it, come back to us because we may not, I know you'd like the 3 million, but we can kind of look at where we're at in the timeframe. Things as well. There's options of that, where you put it in, you need to know by, if you haven't secured something by such and such a. A large amount of money.
Right, right, right.
And have it obligated by a certain timeframe. If it comes to January 1st to 25th.
Right.
We can no longer re-oblige anything. So what kind of CAT grant are you talking about?
I'm sorry.
What kind of CAT catalyst grant?
CAT grant. And I didn't bring that paperwork here with me this morning.
I'm just thinking, I was thinking that. I was thinking that this morning. I was trying to remember. I guess for me, the CAT diligence is, we barricade this out to do the grant for this Turbin grant is. Is. Same amount or whatever, is do you feel comfortable or pardon me, of leaving it for Mike to use as a match for other brands? Or do you say, no, it becomes, don't get that grant? Comes back to us right away and then you need to re-request us some funds? It's always that, that option too. Class, you know, you need to, you also need to know for grants that come up as well, that you can quickly respond. So I, I get that as well. CAT grant seed is 50% for the total project. So. I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about a specific ask and thinking, we could have some other things come up. To, to. There, there's two things that are kind of getting to me here. One is that 60% to get 40% seems like a plot difference in a lot of the grants that you've been able to get so far. It's almost like kind of a sticker shock thing. Wow, you know, that's the first part of it. And the second part is, there may be some other grant up, you know, some other asks that come up. I'm not sure that I'm ready to say, okay, if, if you don't get the grant, 3 million just goes to conservation to, to, to match anything that comes up. I'm not comfortable with that. That's why I was saying, you need to have them come back to us. Let us make that decision not today. Right. Yeah, we're looking at this one singularly for this particular grant.
Right. And I do understand that. I mean, I've wrestled with that ourselves. We've been more successful than 60/40 when it comes to leveraging money. We clearly have, as I mentioned. However, we've also done that at a time cost as far as providing the services to our residents and a fairly significant labor cost, time cost internal of trying to get these grants and managing different contracts and the, the internal costs are significant with it. This would provide us kind of that bolus to, let's just get it done or get it at least done to Collins. So that's the most effective use of, of the funding for this project. So, but I understand we've been, we've been very fortunate to be able to turn that, turn that original DAPL money over several times.
The standing joke at every meeting I went to is how many times you gonna spend that, Mike?
I guess, I guess I'm, what I'm struggling with is not the, the importance of the trail or, or the possibilities surrounding the trail and what I'm struggling with is how many people we could house for 3 million dollars, how many people we could feed for 3 million dollars, how many people we could, you know, I, I'm I'm really struggling with that number. A lot. It's really hard for me. I know trails are expensive. Get that. I know they're valuable.
Yeah.
To the communities that they go through and to the county in general. I'm just thinking about this money was intended to support people who are being seriously impacted by the pandemic. Is that what we're doing?
I, and I completely understand. I think that's, that's a valid concern. I would say that we, when I say that we, I mean, use the big we in conservation circles and outdoor recreation circles, knew that outdoor recreation was always important to our communities pre-COVID. What COVID did is show us that even how, even as important as we thought it was, we were still missing the mark because of how much of the outdoor recreation opportunities, facilities were used by folks during and have been since after COVID. It's just on, it, it's, it's unprecedented. The amount of usage that, that these facilities get. So we know they're important ahead of time. Ahead of COVID, we know they're even more important now. So I, I fully understand your, your question, Latifah. I will just say from a service provider standpoint for outdoor recreation, community quality of life, that this is as well exceptionally important. So we can't keep up with the, with the demand for public outdoor rec opportunities right now.
I could make a motion. Second, whatever, or you can, or whatever, to see where, where it goes. I might make the motion to provide up to 3 million for match for the state tourism grant. For, to finish the part of Iowa nature. Using general rep loss. Second for purposes of discussion. And my question is your, your motion does not include turning that into future match money? Right, that's why, that's why I said only for the heart or for the state tourism grant. If I need to make that clear, I can.
I think I'm pretty clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We need to circle back around to to the library?
Did it?
We never did that one. Okay, sorry, I missed, I didn't get that written down. Okay, so that's all, it's all the request. Opening agenda items. Now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings, but we do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, feel free to step forward to the table. So now I will close public comment number two and move on to the assignment, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Red, Martin?
Just bidding in an after action, excuse, excuse me, review emergency management commission on the on their response to the pandemic. Tomorrow, we got public service recognition in the morning. Thursday morning, we have a drainage district bid open. Do we also have a drainage district? We're just a bit older. Revial brand opening Friday. I'll put some more things on the calendar. Conservation Board next Monday. That's everything.
So, and this may be a question for you, Linda. So I also signed up for that emergency man check because I think it went out to all of us, but is it just the commission? Or is it the jurisdictional?
If it went out to you, I think you're invited.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I for that as well. I took it that it was all, but.
There's several different dates you could sign up for.
No, I think that was something else.
This is a meeting with the consultants who are doing the after action review.
Yeah, and I can, I can ask for whatever. It may be something that I'm not on, it was. Well, I can eat the bait, you know, or you can ask whichever.
Right, yeah, I'm gonna be there. This is from my room, just imagine, but if you want to, fine, but I can represent.
No, and that's, that's fine. I, I was thinking it was the after action of our jurisdictional meetings. And so I signed up for that, but then as you said that right here, I thought, oh, maybe I sent up to something that I didn't sign up for or shouldn't have signed up for. Then I also have the public service recognition. I'm gonna partake in the, or listen on the strengthening Americas Workforces Recovery Funds ARPA webinar tomorrow. Thursday, I have a workforce meeting early at 8:00 AM. And then I will do that one and then be in to do the for the bid opening Thursday. Friday, I have BEDC. It's at 7:00 AM. Yeah, 7:00 AM. And I also have the Revial thing starting at 11:30 and when there's a special board of health meeting that afternoon. Monday, I have, we have secondary roads recognition and I also have a whole lot for that one and another Monday for the civic plus. I just have that up here in June. Yeah, I guess that's a bit possible, but I haven't seen any additional information yet. If that's canceled for Monday?
Okay, at least it's canceled online.
Okay. Well, then I will do that.
I've got all of the scene. I have an alternatives, arrest version meeting on Thursday. Meeting with Greg Thursday morning to talk about arts and culture, this economic driver for the county. I have a meeting tomorrow evening with the boost director. Ten of the meeting to discuss the debris site on Monday morning. Well, we have a drainage district meeting Tuesday morning.
Just, yeah, on the 10th, yeah.
We're not required to be at the bid opening.
Oh, on Thursday?
Okay, anything, anything further?
Move me adjourned.
Second.
Seconded.
Markin.
I, face so high.
Thank you.